Today is Monday, February 11th, and this is a regular school board meeting.
Charles Blacklands.
Here.
Reed Campbell.
Here.
Tom Hagland.
Here.
Sue Kern.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
All friends.
Thank you. Now we'll go with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to start with the approval of the agenda as amended. The only addition is the recognition for the big event.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Hagland, a second from Director Nystrom. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. District recognitions.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to begin tonight by recognizing the Board of Education as the week of February 18th through the 22nd is Minnesota School Board Recognition Week. And I'd like to take this time to thank the Board for all of the extra time and the dedication that they give to provide the highest quality education possible for our students and a great environment for teaching and learning at the Brainerd Public Schools. And so, at this time, one of the things that I'd like to do is I'd like to hand out some certificates to say thank you. Last year, if you remember, for the first time, we gave the Board of Education a framed certificate. And this year, what we're doing is updating the certificates to recognize them for the school year of 1819. So I would like to begin with Sue Kern, our chair. Thank you. And our vice chair, Tom Hagland.
Thank you, Tom.
Reed Campbell. Thank you. Bob Nystrom, our treasurer.
Thank you.
And Ruth Nelson, director.
Thank you.
And I would like to also recognize our newest board member, Charles Blacklands, for his very first recognition and support to the district.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And can we give them a round of applause? Again, I've said this so many times, but I don't think anyone... It's one of those experiences in life that until you've actually been a part of it, you don't understand just how much time and energy extra each of these people gives to make the right decisions on behalf of the children in our district. And so, thank you for all that each of you do for the kids.
Are they only good after you sign them?
Oh, did I? I forgot to sign them!
We don't graduate.
Okay, we'll do it again next week and then we'll have them signed.
Glad we pointed that out. I thought I was the only one that didn't know.
Well, that's funny.
I was so excited I got them done early.
It is funny because I even asked about them. "Oh yeah, I've got them at your table. They're all ready to go." So I'll sign them right afterwards tonight. So congratulations to you all. Also, I'd like to wish the Brainerd Dance Teams, both our Jazz and our High Kick, congratulations as they took the Section 4 AAA Championship at the section meet a little over a week ago and will be competing this weekend down at the state tournament. And so, we wish them the best of luck. Also, to congratulate the Forest View-Nisswa Future Problem Solvers as they had a great day at the regional future problem solving competition. They were competing in the middle divisions where Scarlett Anderson, Vanessa Anderson, and Lindsay Neefert. And they placed in the Performance of Action Plan Competition. The Forest View team of Drew Klein, Owen Burns, and Matt Simpson placed first in the junior division Performance of Action Plan Competition. And Abby Isaacson, Ariana Sandbacher of Nisswa, and Forest View students Calista Anderson, Ava Capell, and Fern French placed third in the junior division Performance of Action Plan Competitions. So congratulations to all of those students. Also, congratulations to the Warrior Nordic Ski Team. The team finished second in the Section 8A meet, and they're headed to the state tournament as well, which is February 14th at Giants Ridge in Biobek. Congratulations to Nordic skiers Evan Storbachan as Evan qualified for the state Nordic Ski Tournament, which is February 14th at Giants Ridge. And also, the amendment tonight is we would like to take this time to congratulate the Brainerd Public Schools Foundation, the Board of Directors for the Foundation, and all of the people that participated in this year's sixth annual big event. Game on. When you play, our students win. Today, we had a meeting, and I know Reed will report on it, but they had six goals that they had for the big event this year, and they surpassed all of them. And they announced today that they are pretty sure that they raised over $65,000 that night to provide services for the children in our district and for our staff. And I see Jenny out in the audience as well, and she was a huge proponent as far as moving forward with the silent action. And Jessica Hapajoki is there as well, the chair of the Foundation Board. So thank you to everyone for all of your hard work to make this a reality for our kids. That ends the recognitions.
Thank you. Now it's time for public input, and we have quite a crowd here. So over our Board Policy 206, we welcome your comments. Number one, if there's a lot of people that want to speak on one topic, we would limit it to three minutes. And there will be no allegations or complaints regarding any specific person or student. If you have a complaint, you should submit it in writing to the superintendent, and there will be no verbal interaction. Are there any comments tonight? Got lots of people here. Seeing none, we'll just move on. Building project update. Brandon Kellerman and Chris Zima.
We have four items that we'll be looking for Board action on. Three of them are in the presentation, and then one is separate that Brandon can speak to when we get to that point. So there's four items we'll be touching on tonight. District standards, and specifically to the elementary. We're currently working on the high school version of those. We'll be coming to you at a later date to discuss those as well. But this will encompass the elementary items that we've been dealing with in the projects up to hand right now. Forest View Middle School, final schematic design review, prevailing wage review, and then a general schedule update on all the projects. So district standards, these are the items I'll be running through briefly. But just an introduction, this is a process over the last six months, pretty much district-wide. District admin, board members, I know have been involved, teaching staff and building administrators as well, have given their input to help form these and shape these district-wide. And the main goal is to basically provide a guiding principle that can be applied in planned bond improvements regardless of the new construction additions to and/or renovations of existing facilities to provide consistency and equity throughout the district's facilities. These standards shall be applied to the buildings identified in the recent voter-approved bond, scope, budget, and existing building structure allow. And then, this last statement really gets to, there are going to be instances where we will need to deviate from the standards. So this just gives us some room to do so. Mainly, again, it's going to be scope, budget, existing building structure would be the main items. And those deviations have been reviewed by the core group and the project oversight as they've been brought to light. So one of the first items that we took on as a group was branding. And the group decided, one, that we want all the buildings to identify as Brainerd Schools. So there's some items here such as the Brainerd Logo B, the colors incorporated into that. Some items are behind the reception desk. And then, as each building converts after their renovations, they'll be taking on the Warrior mascot, and we'll be providing some areas to display that history if they have a mascot that's different right now. So here's some examples of how that's been brought into place. So again, all the entries have a blue with the Brainerd B, the gray logo. And then, again, an example reception desk there that shows that as well. Site standards, the big item here, again, really trying to make the sites safer for kids, parents, and bus drop-off and pickup. So the effort's been to separate all of those items as sites allow and as the local government entities have allowed as well. And then, really, safety of the playground facilities and play fields as well that they'll be fenced in. I won't go through all these in a lot of detail, but the next four slides, I believe, are educational space programs. So these are really the guiding principles that helped organize the building and each space. The biggest thing with the classrooms is that they're organized around a learning commons. Each classroom has the capability of being locked down from the learning commons. Each learning commons has the capability of being locked down from the main corridors. So starting to incorporate some of those safety and security items into the designs. The organization of the classrooms is outlined here. So teaching wall adjacent to the doors where possible. Again, structure did play a little bit of a factor in some of the buildings, so we had to modify that accordingly. But then outlining a few of the items that are included in there as well. Sped classrooms, the media center, each building will have a media center that has some adjacencies to some other spaces. Then the specialty spaces stem in art, music, just outlining what those spaces would receive as well. And then, not forgetting the custodial staff, but making sure that the buildings provide for that as well. The other big part of the standards was really an effort on secure entrances and office standards. So each building will have a secure entrance slash office. The other bullet points here really outline kind of the protocol that you go through as you enter the buildings as a visitor. It's outlined in these diagrams. Basically, you'll have to be buzzed into the office. The office will go through a protocol to make sure you're allowed to be in the building, and then will release you into the building to go see either the teacher or whoever your destination is when you're in the building. Building finishes, we spent a lot of time just making sure we have the appropriate finishes in each spaces and that they're reasonable, they're not out of line with the budget or the costs that they would incur. Example of that is all the classrooms are going to receive carpet. Where there's a sink, there'll be a hard surface adjacent to that. Phases and document standards, this defines the deliverables at each phase. So our three phases during design are schematic design development and construction documents. And then specifications, this starts to getting the construction documents portion of the project. This is really outlines the items that the contractors have to adhere to. So we're just adhering to the CSI numbering system, which is a nationally-recognized institute that guides these principles in the specifications. And then, typical design details, we'll be relying on our subconsultants to use code compliant and fire code compliant details. Procurement, I know Brandon went through this last meeting, so I don't know that we want to spend a lot of time on this unless you've got anything to add.
Unless anybody has any more questions beyond last meeting. In a nutshell, we're utilizing multiple different processes here. Public low bidding for portions of it, best value for portions of it, and then working within these parameters, under $25,000 and up to $175,000. We'll be sticking within the state statutes. So as we move forward, we'll be talking about this more at the Oversight Committee level and adhering to the statutes and the procurement requirements that the Board's already approved.
Leads us to our next item, Forest View Middle School Final Schematic Design Approval. Again, this is the site plan we've been working off of with some minor, minor adjustments, I believe, from the last one. I know it's taken us a long time to get this. I believe this is iteration 13, if I'm correct. But we believe this is probably the best available solution, and it is currently under budget as well.
Do you want to show the three different areas? Maybe highlight those again since the Board will be voting on those. And then, where staff will park and the bus drop-off. Just kind of highlight those five areas. Sorry, maybe. Sorry about that.
So the lower area here, again, is the expanded bus drop-off pickup zone. Off of that, we have the staff parking lot. And then, the main portion of the main focal point of all the improvements that are occurring in the front of the building is really breaking any links to that drop-off lane and really creating two separate drives that go around so that there's queuing available and available to pull out once you've dropped a student off or picked a student up. And then, again, we've got the visitor parking lot here, and then we have an alternate drop-off area as well off of the north. Any other questions?
Will there be signage showing what each area is supposed to be from the road so people will know what's expected?
Yeah, we'll have to most likely add signage just due to city ordinance and their wishes. They've been heavily involved in the solution as well, so.
I know there were people from the public that sent emails that were wondering if we were going to have stop signs to stop the bus traffic on Knollwood or roundabouts or lights. Are you addressing that at all tonight?
I know that's been discussed in the past with the city. I will definitely discuss it with them again, but I think the goal was to try to get away from some of that so that we don't have the backup on the road rather it occurs on the site.
What is the speed limit on that road? Is it 30 or 35?
30.
Okay. I know, and this is a busier road, but down, when you cross over from Clear Lake to Clearwater, there's that elementary school, and when the school is in session, they have those flashing lights. That might, I mean, I don't know how expensive that is, but that might be a nice thing to have.
I noticed, too, that in the comments that came online, they talked a lot about signage and the importance of really making it very loud and clear where people should come in, where they should exit, where parking for visitors is, where parking for staff is, and so on. And I think that that's something, from what I read from the comments, will be really important to the public, that we're really thoughtful as far as making that signage there and also kind of teaching the practices when we first open up with the new entrances.
And just another comment, before this meeting started, I had the opportunity to talk to the principal, John Anderson. And he's been principal, I think he said, for nine years now. I can't believe it's been that long. But anyway, he said that the committee was in total agreement with the changes, and he thought it would make a big difference. And I also asked him about parking because some people were concerned about... We are losing a few parking spots doing this, right?
A few, yeah.
Yeah. But he didn't think that would be a big issue, that people... The only time they park on the street right now is when there's multiple, like a band concert and a sporting concert. It works, so you can't fill the parking lot for three times, I don't think, to meet. So, yeah. So I'm very happy with it.
Chris, just confirming, the main drop-off still has that right exit lane?
The right turn lane, yes.
And the parking lot where the parents can park throughout the day or visitors? Is there also a right and left turn lane when you're exiting that? That, yes, right there. Well, it was right there.
Yes, and that'll be signed for staff.
Do you mean north of that?
I mean, the one, the other one.
They're talking the parent one.
The parent one.
Yeah.
There's a turn lane coming into it off of Knollwood. I'm not sure.
When you're exiting, is there a left and a right choice, like there is at the Big Horseshoe?
Is there one in there, Kim? Not currently, no.
Well, when we have a big event, that would probably be very helpful.
We can look at that and make sure if it's warranted, we'll get it in if we feel it helps the situation, for sure.
So I appreciate the Blueprint 181 being able to push out information on this to parents over the last couple of weeks. Is that the only opportunity parents have been able to look at this particular plan? Or has there been some communication with parents, especially at Forest View? Like, for example, before I got on the board?
I believe we've been using the Blueprint 181 site for all the projects.
We did have that one open house, too. I just can't remember if this was one of the...
We weren't that far yet.
We weren't that far, okay.
That was early on in the other elementaries.
I like how, like with some of the decisions for, before the referendum, there was a number of different opportunities for community members to sound off or provide input on the areas that would impact them. It is a concern of mine about how much time parents, or even how aware Forest View parents especially, or soon-to-be Forest View parents, had in terms of being able to see these plans.
Any other questions? Again, this is the floor plan. So the shaded area right here would be the addition. And then, this area here, we'll be renovating to install the secure vestibule that would be off of the current vestibule. And then, this is an image you probably haven't seen to date, but spring that branding into the main entry there. Again, we're currently tracking with budget, and pending approval this evening, we're tracking with schedule as well. Turn this one over to Brandon.
Sure. So as we discussed the last time, there's certain wage rate requirements that will be applied for some of these projects, and it's due to the LTFM funding source. Since that is a state aid funding source, all the projects, with the exception of these four that are listed here, will be required to use the prevailing wage requirements. So before we discussed it, I was going to ask the Board how we wanted to proceed forward with the remaining four projects. That prevailing wage wasn't mandated by the state of Minnesota. So these four projects are the new elementary school in Baxter, the Forest View Middle School, Brainerd Learning Center, and the Lincoln Education Center. So this is really a board decision if we want to implement the prevailing wage requirements on these remaining four or if we want to not implement it and allow the contractors to pay the wages that they feel necessary as they build these projects. We have seen in the past that there really hasn't been an increase in the cost of construction due to prevailing wage. When we estimate the projects, when they're developed, we typically use the prevailing wage requirements because there's a high number of union contractors that'll bid these projects. And there's also been studies shown that the prevailing wage requirements do not... They don't increase the cost of the project. And I think there's also been a write-up probably a couple of months ago in the Brainerd paper regarding that. So really, kind of, maybe up to the Board to see which way we want to go with this. Some of the changes, basically, the administrative differences would be, there is a certified payroll report required that we require the contractors to report on each month. And then, we forward that in onto the district with the request for payment. And then, the responsibility of keeping that documentation lies with the district. Sometimes you'll get requests from unions or various different entities to verify compliance, and they'll go back and they'll audit them and make sure the contractor is paying the required wages. Beyond that, there really isn't, there really aren't any differences as far as administratively or any extra work or less work for the district. It's really just a transfer of some paperwork. So, you know, we like to have prevailing wage requirements. It just shows support to your community who's passed your referendum, that you also support fair payment of wages for the individuals that are working on the projects. But again, we'll leave that up to the Board to decide if they want to implement these on these remaining four.
But the Lincoln Education doesn't cover any of those. It's just demolition and removal, right? That doesn't cover...
Yes, and it's a small project, but it would be a requirement. All we do is we insert the requirement in the front-end documents of the bid documents, and the contractor just decides which wage rate they want to pay their contractors.
Brandon, I know we've talked a lot about this, and thanks for bringing it up again. What would be the reason that we wouldn't require disadvantage if not requiring?
I honestly don't know if I can think of a disadvantage. Maybe on a very small project, if you have a contractor, a local contractor, that didn't want to pay prevailing wage, you may see a slight cost savings. Other than that, I just think it's a win-win situation for the district, for the contractors, for the employees working on site. Really, there's really no disadvantages to it.
Just a general schedule update. Again, Harrison will be coming to you at the next board meeting for approval of the construction documents and solicit bids. So we're running up against it, coming here to an end of the design portion of the projects and getting closer to actually bidding in construction. Nisswa, again, same schedule as well. And the new elementary is tracking a board meeting behind that currently. The high school, currently working in complete design development. I know we have a packed design meeting tomorrow afternoon. And then, we're currently looking at the next board meeting to bring the preliminary design development presentation, and then looking at that board meeting in March to do the final design development as well. Would that include the Performing Arts Center?
That will include the Performing Arts Center, yes.
So that's what tomorrow's meeting will be, following the one that we had last week where there were many questions about the entrances. We're going to be talking a lot about that tomorrow, what the needs are for the entrance for the Performing Arts Center and such, and then have a better idea moving forward as far as design. That's, yeah. So that'll give us a couple more weeks to get that determined.
Just to calibrate myself on this discussion, being a newer board member, the discussion of how the event center is going to, or the Performing Arts Center is going to be operated, that's a completely different conversation, I'm assuming, correct?
Correct.
Not this, got it.
I'd probably like to add on these updates as well regarding the, so a lot of these city meetings with the property for Baxter, we have been meeting weekly, very good, positive meetings. Last week, we had Lain and Marcy in there and started discussing some more of the financial aspects of it. You know, the good news is we've, even though this whole process started, you know, a few years ago, we're still falling within the original budgets identified for the property piece. We're still tracking just fine for that. Appraisals are due back on the property within a week or two, which will then trigger a review appraisal. And then, we can get the development agreement, start to get that developed with the city of Baxter as well. One piece we'll be discussing later will be, the city of Baxter does need to get moving on the design of it. So we'll be asking the Board to release funding to start that design process for Jasperwood. And it would be a progress payment, pay-as-you-go type situation. As work is incurred, the city of Baxter will bill... As work is incurred, the city of Baxter will bill the district, and the district will make those payments back to the city of Baxter.
Would you like to talk a little bit about the meeting we had with Nisswa the other night as well, as far as getting some of our permits?
Yep, we're also tracking on the conditional use permitting with the city of Nisswa. A few little contingencies that need to happen with that. There's a parcel underneath the church next door that's the district owns. They want to get some of that cleaned up, so we're working forward with that. We have WSN working on developing a survey for that, so we can start to get some of those requirements nailed down as well. But again, we're tracking, we're tracking very well with the city of Nisswa as well.
They did...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, they approved the preliminary, moving forward with the building project in Nisswa the other night. But they did, the planning commission did ask at that time that, with time that the Board of Education look at, we have a couple parcels of land that are underneath the main road, I forget the name of the road, but they would ask for an easement on that. And so, that, you'll be hearing about that in the near future as well. But, other than that, everything went through just beautifully the other night, so I apologize for jumping in.
On getting back to Baxter, how much of Jasperwood, the Jasperwood extension has to be finished before you can start construction on the new building?
We're going to have an alternate route into the site, coming in next to the city property. There's a logging road there, and we'll need to build it up with some Class V as a temporary access. So, we don't have to have the road built prior to starting the construction. But our goal is to get the project bid out with the city and have it, have the road built by winter of this year.
Would that come off of Nolan, that service road?
It will come off of Mapleton.
Any questions?
For the whole, I have a clarification, oh, there you go. A clarification on, all the way back to the branding piece. You talked about the buildings have, will have, those that currently have a mascot that differs from the district mascot, the Warriors, will have a location, i.e. in display case, in which history can be preserved and displayed. So, just to clarify, this is regarding, for example, the Lowell Tigers or the Baxter Buccaneers. That's it, correct, in terms of the historical?
Yes, yep.
I know that we're going to decide on the new entryway for Forest View. Would it be inappropriate to ask John Anderson? I'd like to hear, I don't know if this is inappropriate, but John, would you come up and tell us what you think of this before we approve it?
I just sit right here and love it.
You love it?
Gladly.
Okay. I'd like to hear it from the horse's mouth.
I hope there's any questions?
Okay. And tell us why you love it.
Well, first step, we have to understand that we do have 2,000 kids in that building, and we have about 15 minutes to half an hour timeframe after school that everybody gets there. So, our design team and our process really took a look and really filtered a lot of questions and ran through those scenarios of before school, after school. Knowing that there was nothing that was going to be perfect, we had some constraints about where the building's laid out, where the traffic flow was, our budget, and those types of things. So, we really had to take a look, what was our number one, we had to rank order certain priorities. And one, really, we had to take a look at how do we make that traffic flow a little bit better? And how do we make sure that traffic flow does not go into our parking lots, which is a huge concern about safety, and then secondary then to convenience. So, we had to utilize it. We looked at many different options, like we mentioned before, I think we had 13 different options. Everything from, if we put some buses on the west side, how does that affect air quality inside the building? To, you know, how is bus traffic going to work with the new Baxter Elementary? I mean, so we went through a lot of those things. I feel very confident, again, I'm no traffic expert, but like I was sharing, I've only observed this for nine years to see what are the issues that we see year in and year out. By expanding that loop in front and making it twice as wide, we have two lanes, one side parks, one side drives. We can start to educate folks on how to do that, which is through signage, through emails, through videos, et cetera. We also, by using the north side and turning that into a parent pickup and drop-off loop, correct me if I'm wrong, it doubles, if not triples, the amount of stacking that we're able to do with cars. And parent pickup and drop-off. And it's also a bonus then to put all of our buses on the south side, as it's going to flow quicker, in theory, to Baxter Elementary and keep car traffic, the majority of it to the north side, all of our bus traffic to the south. Hopefully, that will help take the edge off of the intensity that we see primarily in the afternoon. Morning isn't too bad. Closer we get to the beginning of the school day, it starts to get a little bit more backed up, but it's usually that after-school time. I don't know if that answers most of your questions.
So, you and I talked earlier last week, but still a struggle. I took it into the weekend, and I appreciate being brought up to speed best to your abilities. But the struggle I still have is the apex or the point of that wraparound in front of the school and people stopping there. I dropped my daughter out there again this morning, run into that same thing. So, this plan that we have, I'm still not seeing how that's going to be prevented. And that's the struggle that I have, representing the parents of the fellow students of my daughter in terms of how we're going to deal with that. When the parent stops in the middle and has a conversation, that's the one thing that I'm still uneasy with in terms of how we're going to mitigate that. And I haven't heard a comfortable answer to that at this point.
Well, no design solution comes without some education, so there will be some training of parents, whether that's staff or someone out there. What I've seen in other districts is the pinch point that you're identifying is that you just can't park there. People are going to have to wave you forward, and you'll have to go to the furthest-most point. You'll have other parents that'll eventually learn that they'll just pick that point because their kid knows that's where they'll be. So, it does come with education. There is no solve-all answer, I'll tell you that. But I am confident that this will be far better than what you have right now, the situation you have right now.
Yeah, I grew up in northwest Minnesota, in Red River Valley, which, and you, Mr. Anderson, grew up in that area as well.
More Pony.
Exactly. But the one thing I realized is, through the multiple floods that we had in those years, is the water goes where it wants to go. And my concern is, myself as a parent, when the chips are down, you're rushing to get to work, or you need to get back to work. Just like water, parents are going to go and find the most available path of least resistance. And so, my final concern is the north parking lot. And how are we going to, if parents are trying to get Johnny or Janie to school quickly or to pick them up, my concern is if they go into that north parking lot. And I shared this last week, that's a place where just honestly, and I just need to be real with that, I still haven't come off of that as a viable option to drop off my daughter or my other daughter or my son when he gets there. And so, the concern that I have about this plan, it's awesome. You guys did a wonderful job. In terms of the people that we have sitting around the table, I don't question that. I believe that the school district has chosen the right crew for that. But still, those questions persist. And ultimately, I'm going to need to be out in the community and sitting in that queue, waiting to drop off my kid, and having to respond or to answer to fellow parents if this doesn't work. And I'm concerned about that.
Every one of the multiple scenarios that we looked at, one of the top three questions we asked, where's that traffic flow going to go? And how do we prevent more traffic going into parking lots, creating an unsafe environment? That was virtually every scenario that we went through. And that committee really never had a 100% solid answer to that because there's not a perfect solution to that. So, as we chatted about last week as well, that, you know, in our job, then once whatever construction plan is set up, is to monitor and supervise and make sure that we have a safe flow of traffic in parking. But we did take a look at it quite a bit in every one of those situations, in every one of the different plans. Okay, where does this force people to go? If it's backed up, where are they going to go? And how do we supervise folks driving into that parking?
Are there any other questions?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next up, approval of the minutes for the regular school board meeting on January 28th.
Approval of the January 28th minutes?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Nelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I'll some more.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Nystrom. Any discussion?
So, just to clarify with the consent calendar, so by voting on that, is that the, include the Forest View piece that we?
No, no.
That's coming up here in item four.
Staff changes, the leaves, and the ratifying our bills, paying our bills.
Very clear, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Site reports. Student council update. Abby Klecker and Hannah Passy. Sorry if I murdered her names.
So, I'm Hannah.
I'm Abby.
And we're from the Brainerd High School Student Council. We kicked off our Winter Wonder Week this week, today with having Speaker Joe Beckman speak to our freshmen through senior classes this morning.
We have a pet fest on Wednesday, which will include a state send-off for the dance team and for the Nordic skiers.
We also have a fundraising dance on Friday put on by our FFA group, of which some of the proceeds are going towards our warrior warehouse, which is our pet school.
The junior class cabinet is currently working on putting prom, which will be at Northern Pacific, and they decided, they were debating whether or not they were going to include Grand March this year, and they decided to include that.
Good.
So, Grand March will be at the Northern Pacific Center? It won't be at the high school?
It will be at the high school.
Oh, the, or the dance afterwards?
Correct.
Okay.
What is the date of the prom this year?
It's a week later than it usually is in April. I think it's the second weekend this year.
Okay, good. Hopefully, no snow, right?
Yes.
That's what we all want. Anybody else have any questions? Great, thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, the Forest View update. Dan Fisher, Trudy Storken, and Ashley Roman.
Dan, see if that mic works there for you.
Pretty good at sharing.
Some right there, too.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. I know that there was a lot on the agenda this time, and last year, we did speak in front of the board after the deaths of two students in our high school, talking about mental health and some of the things that we're doing at Forest View, and had some really good conversation and good questions. And at that time, kind of said, we need to continue this conversation. So, we asked if we could come talk with the board a little bit about mental health at Forest View, and certainly what we, weighs pretty heavy on our hearts and what we do on a daily basis, which is taking care of the hearts of those kids at Forest View, working really collaboratively with the other staff in our building hugely. But as school counselors, we also have a very definite, different role also. And so, thank you, first of all, just for having us. We, do you want to go? So, we thought we'd, we have a couple of things to share. As part of our PLC, we create, last year was the first year that we started creating a counseling department data report each month. So, we do that, and kind of our next step this year is getting better about sharing that out to stakeholders. So, we do have some copies of that that we'll share with you in a bit. I think some things that have become really important to us, especially even in the last year, is people really having a kind of understanding what we do as middle school counselors, which sometimes I think, kind of people's experience with their own counselors, what they think all school counselors do. And so, we felt it really important to know that truly at Forest View, we've worked really closely with our administration that we really are taking care of kids. That's what we are doing a lot of our day, very high percentage. And the needs are great. We have a lot of hurting kids, and look those kids in the eyes on a daily basis. And some things that we do know is that parents do come to us, and kids do come to us, and teachers do come to us. And we often talk, and even John Anderson and I have talked about this for years, that we sometimes kind of compare our jobs to the starfish story, which maybe some of you have heard, but quickly and simply, a man's walking along the beach, and there's all these starfish on the beach, and throwing them in one at a time. And there's different versions of the story, but someone else comes along and said, "Well, why are you throwing in the starfish?" And the man said, "But it mattered to this one." So, I think that we know that we have a lot of starfish. And we, sometimes, you know, it can be a challenge that we're doing a lot of prioritizing of which starfish do we throw back right now, even though we know they're all really important. So, some of our data reports, which Mr. Fisher, Dan, will talk a little bit about, we try to kind of take all that and put it on paper, which is simple, but not really. It's very complicated, actually. There's nothing simple about that. Do you want to go ahead, or who?
Yeah, so I'll just give you a couple of those starfish stories, just to be very, very brief. As Trudy said, you know, our job often resembles that story very much, and that sometimes the need that you see kind of laying out in front of you is greater than you can really tackle at times. In one of our data reports, we'll share our November report, which is also when we do our suicide prevention program in seventh grade. Seventh grade is my grade level, so I spent a lot of time doing a lot of other things that are kind of dictated or written out in that report. But I also take care of a team in eighth grade. And during the week, when a lot of my time was spent managing the suicide prevention program and making a lot of parent phone calls regarding kids who are in need, I had an eighth-grade student who had given me three purple notes, which is how they asked to see us, and hadn't indicated on there that it was an urgent concern, excuse me. And that weekend, she attempted to take her own life. And so, as Trudy said, you know, one of the big things we try and prioritize in our job, kind of minute to minute, it feels like at times, and that sometimes we don't know the whole story. They aren't putting all of that down on the purple notes. And we try and communicate very much so that every student does matter. And at times, when we are prioritizing and we don't get to everybody, that some of those big things can happen, which is the unfortunate part in our job. The other one is, we've had some students who have taken a lot of our time, and we value kids being in our district, and we know that we can keep kids in our district, and we can do a lot of different things at the building level. And we, at times, play a very integral role in that, in keeping kids here. But we do have kids who are very anxious, and maybe things might be really easy if they were homeschooled, or if they attended online school. But we know the value in kids being present in our buildings, and we know that we do take care of kids, and teachers do a good buildings, and we know that we do take care of kids, and teachers do a good job, and we do a good job. And so, we, we put in tremendous amount of hours in keeping these kids in our building, and really thinking creatively around programming to ensure that their needs are being met.
Thank you. So I want to, just quickly, so there's a lot of information in these data reports, so obviously I'm gonna just highlight a few of the things. So I wanna just kinda highlight, the reason, as Trudy just shared, the reason why we started collecting these data reports is a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to communicate what we do. We wanted to communicate what our school counseling department is doing at Forest View Middle School, because like Trudy said, sometimes you kinda get that experience of how, what your school counselor was, and sometimes we see our doors shut and that, well, they're just meeting with kids, but what are we really doing? How are we impacting our school? So we wanted to communicate to our stakeholders what we were doing, but also just kinda communicating the needs of what our students were coming to us. So I'm just gonna highlight a couple of major points, you can go ahead and look through and peruse on your own, but a couple of major points that really communicates what we're seeing in the counseling office, is number one, we are seeing, we had our suicidal concern data up to this point, through December, we triaged forty-six scenarios of suicidal concerns, whether that was meeting with the student, referring them on to further mental health, referring for a further suicide assessment. Another major part of what we're seeing is our number of, our students with, coming to us with anxiety, was twenty-four percent of all of our students in November, that increased to thirty percent in the month of December. So we were seeing, as we've been seeing for a number of years now, the number of student suicidal concerns, as well as anxiety is increasing in our students. Another important thing that I think is very telling of what we've had to do over the last number of years as a school counselor, is the number of concerns that require our immediate attention. In November, that number was fifty-three percent. In December, that number was fifty-seven percent. Fifty perc, fifty-seven percent of the students that we are seeing, they require us to leave the meeting that we're in, or to, you know, put that email in a draft and send it later, or to directly take maybe one of the other students, if it's a seventh grade student and I work with sixth grade, I need to see that student right away, because Ashley might be in a meeting, or Trudy might be out sick with a sick kid that day. So fifty-seven percent, that's, I think that's really telling just of where our starfish that we're trying to take care of, we're not getting to the, sort of the preventative stuff. Another thing that's been major, I think we've been doing top twenty now for how many years in our district?
Decade, ten.
Over a decade, we've had a curriculum that addresses social, emotional, social and emotional learning, and we have, in the past, somewhere along the lines of ten to twelve lessons. This year, we have not done a single classroom lesson with our fifth grade students for the first time in over a decade, because when we have a line out our door of purple notes of kids wanting to see us, and fifty-seven percent of our needs are requiring our immediate attention, we're not able to get into the classroom and do some of that preventative work. So I think that's kinda the big three points that we're seeing in our data reports. We do these data reports every month, so we have some from September, October, November, December, and we also just finished our January report, so we have that kind of ready and available. I don't know if it's something that you wanna peruse some more, but that just kinda gives you an idea of where we're at. Again, the goal here is just communication of what we're seeing, the communication of the needs that our students are seeing, and then what we're doing as school counselors to address those needs.
We have done some classroom lessons in fifth grade, did three this school year, and just haven't been able to get back in as, since probably November.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah.
I noticed that almost fifty-two percent of the people that you're seeing are in eighth grade. Why is there such a high percentage in the eighth grade compared to the other grades?
It's a wonderful question.
So, there's a lot, there's just a lot going on with our eighth graders. And I had this group of eighth graders, actually, last year I had five hundred seventh graders, and then I had my team of eighth graders in addition, and it was probably my heaviest year in twenty years as a counselor. There's just a lot, those kids just have a lot going on, so it's the same group that we saw having a lot going on last year, they're just in eighth grade now. So there's just a lot with that crew.
The way that we, I should add that the way that we divide our caseload with three of us for four grades, eighth grade is the one year where all three of us are working with eighth grade. So, we have, there's, many of our eighth graders are brand new to us, they're not the group that we follow. We follow from fifth grade to sixth grade to seventh grade, and we get to know those kids. Our eighth grade year is our sporadic year, and so we're divided between three, and they're the biggest, over half of our time is being spent with that grade, and research shows that that's a critical grade, too, as far as development and signs of mental health as well.
How much does that relate to a hormonal issue, that, you know, they're thirteen now, they're getting to those teen years? Does that make a difference?
I think, you know, I can do this. I think in part it does, but also like Trudy said, you know, those students that, they are really hurting kids, they have a lot going on, and their personal stories are, there's, there's just a lot there. So part of it is developmental, 'cause we know how adolescence is, is that big part where your brain is developing, there's a lot of emotions, there's a lot of other stuff going on, and they really do need some problem solving and kind of, you know, somebody to listen to them and to kinda help them figure out how to address different things that are going on in their life. But I also think that, as you can see by some of the concerns, there is some true mental health concerns there, in that there are those suicidal concerns, and there are the high levels of anxiety that we are seeing, that do, you know, show up in that number as well.
Do you have a way, from when they move from eighth grade to ninth grade, to communicate with the ninth grade counselors as far as, 'cause especially for this coming year, they're gonna have a lot of needs, and share, so there's, I do.
I would, I think we all just work really closely in general, but we, you know, we've always tried to work with, you know, the high school kinda leads the transition to ninth grade a little, we kinda lead the transition from fourth to fifth coming into our building, but I think that there's been different ways we've done that. Ultimately, the overall goal is to, you know, pass on and to communicate those concerns and needs as much as we can. Kinda changes over the years how we do that.
One, one thing I wanted to share, but before I do that, a little bit about myself is I communicate in a, in a circular manner, probably there's a little bit of that, my cultural aspect, but, so I'll try to stay on point, but for the rest of the school board, ta-da! That's, that's how I, how I communicate. Anyhow, with that being said, professionally, my day job, I, I choose some of the same dirt as all of you, in terms of the battle of providing adequate, accessible, and effective support for students as it relates to, to mental health. So I really appreciate all that you do. One thing I do realize, well, for example, I, I, I coach fifth and sixth grade girls' basketball, and one of the things that, that when, when we lose a game, or make a mistake out on the floor, one of the, one of the pieces that they taught me how to be an effective coach here in Brainerd, is I stand the girls together, and if we make a mistake or we lose a game, we can say, "Okay, everybody, one, two, three," we go, "Woo!", we wipe it away, and move into your weekend, enjoy, enjoy the weekend, we'll practice next week. Well, that's something that you all aren't allotted all the time. You aren't given that opportunity necessarily, but for sure, it's, it's very difficult to just simply wipe away some of those challenges that you go through. And I really wanted you to know, I really appreciate all, all that you do. It's very important, and, and I'm hearing you loud and clear of what you're sharing. With that being said, I really like this information, and I'm not sure, do we, do we have access to this on a consistent basis? I think that's something that, that I'd love to see, although there's lots of information I'm sure we do have, but I think this is something that's so important for, for me, I can only, only me as a school board member, I need to see that.
I think that's something that we've kind of talked about when we presented, we started doing this last school year, doing a monthly data report, and I think we've talked about just who we share it with, and I don't know if we wanna just, you know, share each month with everybody on the board, or maybe have one point person to share, and you guys can discuss, I don't know.
Or even if there's a place to be able to go to access it, that would, that would be helpful.
On your website?
We do not.
Which is kind of that next step, that's kinda where we're at right now, is doing a better job of sharing, so absolutely, yeah.
We need to hear that, thank you.
And it's kinda fun, too, because we can, you know, like on the front cover is us with Allison at a conference where she presented, and it's kinda neat to highlight, you know, some of those great things that we do, so, yeah, we need to work on that.
And it's not all bleak, we try to put a positive thing in there, you know, what's new in the counseling department?
We laugh a lot. We actually laugh a lot.
Yeah, we presented at our winter conference this year, and for those of you that don't know, Alice is, Allison is a good friend of ours and a former department member, and she's off doing new things and trainings, and so just those little things that we like to kind of highlight as, yeah.
And just a couple of comments or questions, just as an example, looking at December's, there's two hundred and thirty-four counseling sessions, are those all kids coming to you?
Yeah.
Yes.
So do you ever really get into a proactive going to the kids, or are these just what you're reporting as they come forward?
The data that we collect on immediate attention kind of speaks a little bit more to that, the two hundred and thirty-four counseling sessions are just any time we have a student in our office that we're meeting with in some way. The fifty-seven percent number, the fifty-six point eight, or whatever it is, those are kinda the scenarios where we have to drop everything and we have to meet with that kid right away, so we're not, the other forty-five were, maybe they're still coming to us, but we're gonna get to them tomorrow morning, or we're gonna, you know, maybe they just kinda wanna talk.
But you're getting to them because they've requested to see you.
It varies.
It really varies. We get referrals not only from students, but teachers will email us and say, "Hey, could you check in with so-and-so teacher's parents?" I think the referrals kinda come from anywhere.
And then how often, on average, is there a follow-up session, or would that be included in as two thirty?
Yes, it is.
So if we were able to see the student and follow up with them, it would be reported in that data, because if we have them in our office and are having a conversation with them, that's when we collect the data from those students. But we often, as a counseling department, talk about how this data doesn't show the whole picture, because it doesn't include, you know, taking data from an email, you know, oh, this is a student that we're, we might be problem solving around via email or with a parent on a, you know, a phone conversation, so it's only data on the kids who we have sitting in front of us. So it can be kind of part of the story.
Another statistic that, on the very end page, is after meeting with the student, is there follow-up that needs to happen? So fifty-five percent of the time, there needs to be some sort of a follow-up, and then in the very next bullet point is what are the next step? And so as you can see, forty-seven percent will call a parent, thirty-five percent of the time will talk to that teacher, or follow up with administration, so there's a number of things that then are needed after we meet with that student. So a one meeting with a student might only be twenty minutes, but then there's the follow-up pieces that happen after that. So yeah, we're trying to, we try to indicate how much, you know, one counseling session is not created equal. One counseling session could be the whole day, because you're trying to get ahold of a parent, or you're trying to triage, you're trying to get a referral in for our school-based program, and you're trying to do a lot of things.
So I have a, maybe this is a stupid question, but when I think of your school counselors, this is just part of your job, don't you have to deal with like class scheduling, or no, you don't? Kathy Hensley used to do that. You don't do that at all. What, what other, I mean, do you, but you have to have non-mental health issues with kids, and, I mean, is this the main part of your day, is?
I can s-
Do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah. I would say at our middle school, as, as Trudy mentioned, is that we've worked really closely with our administration to have roles that kinda match our training as school counselors. Our training as school counselors really is working individually with kids for a variety of reasons, and I think that in a perfect world, we would have some college and career stuff at eighth grade, but at this rate, you know, we don't, you know, at the high school is different, I can also speak to being a former high school counselor, there was a few more of those things that did need your time. You needed to be able to manage the schedule change requests, and just some things that kinda went along with that college and career piece, and that, that academic, you know, students failing classes, we had to spend a lot of time with that, plus triage, a lot of this other stuff that was happening, too.
So you're focused mainly, yeah. Well, that's good. Obviously, you could use probably double the staff, but.
Yeah, that's, it's a huge part of the focus, especially as, as things have changed, and as there's, you know, we, we were just talking recently that there's more and more concerns that are really complicated, and more than ever, we have to consult with each other, because it's not an easy, you know, I've been doing this twenty years, it's hard sometimes to know how to handle different situations, and they become more complicated. So, a very majority of our, our days are taking care of kids, whether it's through the parents, working with the teachers, meeting with the students, meeting with groups of students, but that's the majority of our job right now.
And I would guess the collaborative worker works a lot with you, too.
Yep, we work very closely, absolutely, yeah.
I had a question. Do you ever confer with any of the youth groups in the area from the local churches to have their help at all? Do you ever ask them for help, or?
We've actually, over time, we've worked, we've had different relationships with different youth directors, we've sometimes had some youth directors who come into our building and volunteer their time. Used to have someone who came in with dogs, and the kids would love that, so we have at different times.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Trudy, when you compare a student from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand eighteen?
Nineteen ninety-eight. How old was that?
How have those concerns or challenges changed for the student in those twenty years? What, what they face today versus, say, in nineteen ninety-eight?
You know, I, I, when I first started, so twenty years ago, I don't, I would rarely deal with suicidal concerns, honestly, and now it's something that is kind of an every other day, you know, and sometimes for us, it almost, it can sometimes, last year it was, I think last year with those seventh graders, I had fifty percent of the suicidal concerns, which was part of where that year was really, really heavy for me. But I think we, sometimes it feels like you're dealing with it even more than we are, because we consult with each other so much when they do come up, to try to make sure that we're, we're going in the right direction with what our recommendations are. So, that's definitely, you know, changed a lot over time. I remember days when, you know, sometimes I, we just said this just the other day, that those easy little simple friendship conflicts don't happen very often anymore. I think honestly, the teachers do a lot of that, and then when things get really complicated, they'll come and say, "Okay, I've been trying, Trudy, but now I need your help, because this isn't working," and now a parent is upset, or the, you know, it's just not getting better, or whatever it might be. So, and, and just even anxiety, I, I felt like I didn't have to be an expert on it, and now we really do need to be experts on, on understanding and how to help move our, our students forward. And certainly, we work really closely with Northern Pines in our building and have a great relationship. Sometimes there's barriers with that, getting things in place that kids need. We also have students that do have mental health even outside of our building, and they maybe see someone once a week, but they still are maybe hurting right now and today. So, it's changed a lot in twenty years, but I think education has changed a whole lot in twenty years. It's certainly not just counseling.
So with, with, as it relates to, you'd said sometimes there's, there's not always the greatest flow or, or some barriers between you and other mental health facilities, what are some of those barriers?
It's more the, it can be hard to get in place sometimes, is more so is what I meant in that realm. Sometimes, just, you know, getting parents on board can be really hard, and, and there's times that we'll have parents even say, and, and, you know, say, "My child doesn't need a therapist, they just need someone to talk to," and sometimes they're very right, you know, that, that they, they're a kid and they're trying to maneuver a lot of different things, and especially at this age that is very unique of its own, being in middle school, and, and they're hurting, and they're trying to find their way through, but they don't necessarily need that, but they need someone, and so we certainly hear that from parents, you know, they'll say they, they need someone like you, but, and, and they're right, you know? And sometimes it's just hard to get, for various reasons, it can be just hard to get it in place, and many times we do, you know? So, there's the variety, you know, in that realm. And sometimes we're just working together really close, too, you know?
I would, like Charles, I, I love data, but only if we do something with it.
Yeah.
And so obviously sensing that there's time, your, the demand of your time is very, very high, and I'd rather see, I think it's, it's a, an investment for our community that we invest in our youth to help them, and before they, before they graduate, once they get out into the real world, and we've, we've seen this as well in our own business, that we're dealing a lot more with issues today of just family life in general, and the pressures. So, reading between the lines, I'm sensing that you're looking for, "We need more help", there's a cry for more help, and the challenges are, are greater today than yesterday with kids, than, I think the data's great, I think we should look at that, but I don't think we should be going and, and have you come back in a year and give us some more data, and a more cry for help, and we just say, you know, let's, thanks for everything you're doing. I think, I think we have to step up to the plate and figure out how we provide, these kids are at a vulnerable state, and just seeing some of the, you know, the numbers These kids are at a vulnerable state, and just seeing some of the, you know, the numbers right now, and if we can't be proactive with them, this is gonna be a challenge, and it's gonna get harder and harder and harder. But I would ask somehow, within the board, that we, we look at this, and then, and maybe we get back to you to say, here's some additional information or data, things we'd like to see. But, you know, just to look at it every month, unless we do something with it, isn't meaningful. And I think we owe it to, to our kids and to our community, that we see what can be done in this area. A lot of pressures out there, and you're in the trenches dealing with it.
We, we are, and I think we, we appreciate that a whole lot. And I think what's important to know is, I mean, that, I, I've, for a long time, worked with an incredible team, and we really do care about the kids. And we come in each day, and, and like many people in education, are giving what we can to take care of these, these kids. And you, and at the end of the day, you just do your best. So, you know, sometimes I think we're just kind of that voice, that we, we do know their hurts. You know, we know that sometimes it is part of that hormonal stage of, of middle school, but sometimes you listen to their stories, and you think, how are you walking through the door every day and coming in here, and you're pulling Ds? Or some of them are pulling As and Bs, and their stories are absolutely incredible. And they inspire you, too, but break your heart at the same time, so.
I'd like to echo what Tom said, and just to bookend what, what I had to say, what I have to say is, I, I really appreciate this conversation to, to go on after tonight. I understand I have a certain amount of time, but I certainly have a lot more questions and a lot more learning to do, and I'm not sure how that would look. But from my, but from my end, I'm all in to, to learn more, and to hear more of what, what's needed, and how, how I can, in my seat, be supportive.
Yeah, I think we're open to any, whatever, if you have ideas of, okay, so now we have the data, what's the next step? I, I think we struggle with that. A, it's getting the data out there and sharing it, but then, you know, what is the next step? And so, I think any further conversations, we'd be willing to have. I think I have an open, I think I'd be in agreement if I said, we have an open invite to come and visit us in our office, and, and see, and catch five minutes of our time while we are triaging these situations, but, you know, to at least kind of spend some time with us and see what we're seeing.
All right.
We've had teachers working on that, you know, program for a long time, and I see the plaques there from national teacher, Minnesota teacher Guy Dow talked about the starfish way back then.
Yeah.
That was one of his stories, was, you know, saving some student.
Yeah.
You know, and catching that starfish. So, thank you for the work you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have review of the first budget revision. Marcy's already here.
Good evening. The first revised budget is page forty-one in Board Book, and then the presentation's just kind of a synopsis of what's in there. A lot more detail in Board Book. We start off first with the fund balance summary table of last year's activity and ending fund balance. So, the unassigned deficit was six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Ending fund balance was seven point four million, or about nine percent of our operating expenditures in the general fund. Our current policy is five to seven percent, just as a reminder. So, we take that, we took seventeen eighteen's first revision, and we rolled it forward, and then did some assumptions for our preliminary budget, two percent increase in gen ed formula, increase in enrollment of thirteen pupil units, three point seven percent in special ed, increase in levy, a decrease in Title Two funding, estimated increase in the labor agreements that we had. And then, we did go through, or did have a net reduction in staffing of approximately seventeen point eight-two FTE, and then also put in an estimated savings from staff replacements and reallocations. And with that, we also tried to estimate our enrollment. We do look at the, our, our school, we use schoolfinances.com, and they have several scenarios that you can choose from. And the option that we use is the four-year average of the zip codes that we can select. We select six of them, Brainerd, Baxter, Fort Ripley, Garrison, Merrifield, and Nisswa. And what it does is, it looks at the capture rate of those last five years, or four years, excuse me, and how many kids did we have attend versus what was, what were the births? And based on that, the projection model gave us an estimate of six thousand five hundred and forty-one point seven pre-K to kindergarten for the budget that was presented June twenty-fifth. And, and that was four hundred and seventy-three kindergarteners coming in. So, that gave us a, a preliminary budget with unassigned deficit of four hundred and eighty-one thousand three seventy, three hundred and seventy-seven in the general fund. So, we take that, and now, we have worked through several months, we have more updated numbers, our October one count is in. So, based on that, we have increased our enrollment projection by eighty-three point six. TRA went from seven point five to seven point seven one. Updated salary and benefits with all of our settled labor agreements, and then there are still some estimates in there. Removal budgets that were carried forward but not needed, an example of that is E-Rate. Some years, we do have equipment that we purchase, and this year was a, a year that we did not purchase any equipment. The OPEB implicit subsidy draw, we just recently got an updated actuarial study, so we were able to increase that amount based on the study. The construction fund was added, revenues and expenses, based on all of the bond sales that we had in December, and then an estimate of the interest and investment fees, and then also draw schedule from ICS, which shows how much will we be drawing from the construction funds this, rest of this year. And then, land acquisition expenses were added, based on estimates. We're hoping, you know, by June, that we have all those acquired. So, that is the amount that was used for the budget. And then, also, the debt service funds, revenue and expenses were added based on the bond refunding sales, so proceeds and principal. And then, with the October one count, we did use our projection model again, and that gave us an updated ADM of six thousand six hundred and twenty-five point three. Interestingly enough, the capture rate for the last five years, based on the zip codes, was ninety-one percent. This year, we were at eighty-four percent, four hundred and thirty-five kindergarteners, very low. I'm not really sure, but, so we did still use that October one count, and based on that, ninety-six to ninety-seven percent of the October one count is what we see at the end of the year. And that is how we came up with what we're projecting for the eighteen, nineteen. So, it is a substantial increase, but if we look at prior years, we do capture about ninety-six to ninety-seven percent. So, that is what we plugged in with this revision. And with all of those changes, we do see a-
Just interrupt real quick. What, what did you say was the forecasted kindergarten head count coming into the year?
Four hundred and seventy-three.
Four seventy-three.
Yeah.
And we ended up with four thirty-four.
Five.
Have we ever had that low of a?
Not that I can see in our data.
We gotta figure that out.
There was, you know, this is all hearsay, but there were comments made that several kids were held back. So, I'm curious to see if next year, if our capture rate is actually higher than the ninety-one percent.
Be a lot of kids.
It's actually looking very positive right now, but again, it's very early.
Yes.
But when you look at February first, number of children that have enrolled for kindergarten next year, it's much higher than it has been in the last couple of years that I've been here. So, we're cautiously optimistic that, yeah. Yeah. And as we move forward into next year's budget, we're feeling somewhat confident that we can use a higher number than what we're at this year.
Correct. And you'll see that in this, there's a two thousand nineteen, twenty column, and with, using that same data as prior, with the four, the four-year average of the zip codes, our kindergarten projection is about four hundred and fifty-nine.
Yep.
So, we'll use that going forward. Yeah. And so, with all those updates, the unassigned balance is now at negative one hundred, or six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three twenty-six. The FTE added is in the packet, and one point seven seven was certified, and then ten point two three was the paraprofessionals, and there was a point seven five of other. So, it's approximately a one hundred and sixty thousand dollars more of a deficit than the original, the preliminary budget. And then, the school board, as I said, it's five to seven percent. So, with the projected unassigned fund balance right now is eight percent or less than one month of operating expenses. And I always plug in there that the state recommends three months. So, at some point, I would like to look at that policy and see what, see if we can modify it a little bit. Two thousand nineteen, twenty, so we'll take this first revision and as our starting point, and then make the modifications that we known and estimated assumptions. For example, increase in projected enrollment, that implicit subsidy does go down next year, how much we can draw down. Special ed revenue, we're hoping that cap goes up, so that we can see more revenue come in from special ed. TRA increases again from seven point seven one to seven point nine two. And then, if we, at that time, known and projected salary and benefit increases again. And this presentation focuses primarily on the general fund, but in your packet, you can see all of the funds were, what their adjustments were with this first revision. Are there any questions?
I have a quick question. When, when you took me through the, the official school board one-on-one, a couple, couple months ago, which I appreciate it, or more of a boot camp, tires and all of that. Anyhow, we had talked about this a little bit, I'm just trying to refresh my memory. When you look at some of the line items here, for example, the, you know, gifted and talented, technical education, basic skills, they start out with no balance, or no beginning balance, and then through the revenue, and then we, we transfer dollars in. Are those transferring dollars, does that come from the fund balance?
It, from unassigned.
Unaside, unsigned, okay, unassigned. So, then, so tho, those entities aren't necessarily revenue, they don't bring in revenue?
They don't bring in enough revenue to cover all of their expenses.
Well, for example, the gifted and talented, though, all of the teachers are in that, correct?
Correct.
And so, we do get student funding for those teachers.
Correct.
It just comes in on the general fund, and we transfer it to the gifted and talented. So, it's not like-
So, the, the line item has about ninety-four thousand that we get for gifted and talented revenue.
Right.
And then, all of, like you said, all of the teachers are coded there, and so, we do not get enough revenue in the gifted and talented restricted account to cover all of those, that program.
But there's other revenue that we get from those kids that really should be-
The gen, gen ed aid you're talking, yes.
Yeah. So, it's, it's not like we're spending that much more money on that program, right?
Could I, I mean, not today, but perhaps, and not just gifted and talented, but I'm just curious as to some of these others, that looks like we're kind of cash flowing it.
And I would guess the same, this shouldn't tick.
Yes, yes. Yep.
Yeah, those are, yeah, curious about, I guess, all four of those or five of those?
Yeah, I'm not sure why we do it that way. It is confusing.
It is. I, it's restricted, so we have to show that we do get the money and how we spent it. So, for example, if we were under in those, we would have to have a fund balance. If we spent, you know, if gifted and talented had ninety-four thousand coming in and only spent eighty, then the fourteen thousand has to go to fund balance. But since we overspend, then unassigned comes in and saves the day.
Any other questions before we move on? Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
That was very good.
Thank you.
And next up, one-to-one Chromebook policy and usage handbook and timeline update. Oh, they want you up here. Come on, guys.
Right. Good evening, thank you for having us. We are here to kind of bring forward the one-to-one handbook for the ninth through twelfth graders. I wanted to quickly point out our timeline up here, and we are right on with our timeline to roll out with an August deployment to our ninth through twelfth grade students. As you can see, we're here tonight for that, board approval of that, of the forms. And then, we will be moving into getting more information about the device specific from our students and our staff, and then moving forward with that. So, I wanted to show you that we're on our timeline, then also, I wanted to put up our contributors here that have really done a lot of work in this handbook, and a lot of them are here tonight. So, if they could please stand up real quick, people, our tech team, I know they don't like when I do this, but we have to recognize them. So- They're not all here, as you can see from the list, but I do want to recognize everyone who's put forth a lot of time into this, and we still have a lot of time left to go, but, but a lot of people have put in a lot of time. Up here with me today, Nicole Harmer is a teacher at BHS, Landon Brainerd is a teacher at BHS, and Logan Saboda, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. He's got a tough last name. Saboda is one of our students at BHS, who's been an integral part of getting this handbook together. We've done this through face-to-face meetings, as well as a lot of digital, kind of on the, on the handbook itself, giving comments back and forth, all of those sorts of things. So, we are here, we're going to be asking for your approval to move forward with that guidebook, but we were wondering if you had any questions for us. And I wanted them here, in case you had specific questions from a teacher or student point of view.
I have a couple of questions. First, I thought it was really good, and I'm excited for this initiative. So, one of my questions was, the, in here, and I can't remember what page it was, it was like, even if a student only takes one class at BHS, they get a device. Is that true, even if, like, let's, I don't know, maybe they don't, but do some of them just take FIET or an art class, where they don't really need it? I mean, don't need a device? Because it seems kind of strange that they're coming to our class, our school for one class, and they're getting a device for the whole year. And I understand that they need it if they're in math, or science, or history.
I'm gonna touch a little bit on that, and then, maybe Nicole and Landon can help. We are actually looking, of course, there's a balance between technology and not using technology, but really, all of our subject areas will be using these devices in some way, whether it's to communicate with students when they're outside of school, when they miss a class or something, they need to make something up, whether in art, they're gonna, they could be doing portfolios on Google Drive and continued portfolios throughout the year. So, there's really implications for these devices in all of our subject areas. I am gonna ask Nicole to kind of talk more about the one, because we were, that was a discussion that we had, is how do we determine how long they have to be on campus to be able to get one?
Okay, thank you. To be honest, I don't have a lot of scenarios where I can give you exact, like, what a student's schedule might look like. You know, we do have some students that'll go, say, part-time PSEO, and then come to Brainerd High School for a class or two. Maybe it's for choir, or for their science course in particular. And so, obviously, you might think, well, choir, what do they need it for? But I do know that they schedule a lot of independent meetings with students, and they're looking at ways to do that, then through, you know, devices, and where there's virtual meetings also. And so, there's, provides some opportunity to free up some of that face-to-face, where they can still help students. And so, I think the idea is that we want to make sure that students that come into our classrooms have the same and equal opportunity as any other student that's in one of our classrooms, and teachers proceed using them with their students. Of course, there's a lot of learning curve that's gonna come with it, so we can't say what it looks like yet exactly in every single classroom. But I do anticipate that most of the classrooms will be using it in some capacity or another. The other thing, too, that I can add to that, is that a lot of our students do also sometimes take, maybe, I shouldn't say a lot, there's a portion that might take an online class, and that may be why they're not in our classroom. And so, they're held accountable, though, to being in, say, a study center or some space where they have to take that online class in their day. It's not just a free hour where they're away. So, whether it's a face-to-face that they're in our classroom, they stay, maybe can use that device then to access what they need. So, I think it's an- So I think it's an equity issue as to why we put that in the policy handbook that way.
Just thinking, like, choir.
Right, exactly, choir, gym, and in terms, again, like, they can do reflection pieces. I know for gym, sometimes FIET, that they'll, they'll miss a course and they have to make it up somehow. And I think there's sometimes a reflection piece as to what activity they did. And I see that being turned in more of an electronic virtual format than on a slip of paper that a teacher now has to handle.
My son took an online FIET course and I thought it was kind of a joke, but anyway. It's like, really?
You, you had mentioned, you had mentioned equity and Sarah, we've had these conversations before. First off, love the idea, the idea of getting Chromebooks in our students' hands, all our students' hands. Two-pronged question. First one would be insurance, I saw in there that students have to pay insurance. So, so my, my first question would be, well then, how, how would a student that may not have the, the resources cover that insurance? And I'm hoping that there's something in place. And then finally, my second question is, and it's an important one, that if a student, when you look at page fifty-eight, using your Chromebook outside of school, that you'd need Wi-Fi internet connection will be necessary. So my concern is if there's a student that doesn't have the, the financial resources or their family doesn't have the financial resources to have internet. For example, Catherine and I, boy, we probably, my wife and I, we probably play roughly a hundred bucks, so we might have maybe the Cadillac version and whatnot. But still, I, I'm very familiar that, that that can cost a certain amount of, a certain amount of money. My concern are those students that, that don't have access to that, maybe don't have a parent or a family member that's able to pony up for that. So what are we going to do in those situations?
So I'd like to take the first, the first question first. What we're planning on doing is that if there is a breakage, that there's, where there's a repair or replacement needed, Ms. Rusk and Ms. Hopojoki have been part of these conversations. And our goal is that for those families that won't be able to afford it, afford it, that there's some kind of restitution available there. So maybe they can help fix other devices or that sort of thing. But that there doesn't necessarily have to be, it doesn't necessarily have to come in the form of a payment all the time. But that's something where we will work with individual families on those needs and in those, in those cases.
Right, because we don't want to penalize students, the, the price of a, of a Chromebook if, if something were to happen or life happens.
Correct, and, and this is part of our curriculum. This is part of what we're doing, this is part of how we're moving forward. And so they will, we will require them to have one, so we want to be able to work with the families on, on moving forward with that. The second thing, and did you guys have anything to add on that from our discussion? Okay, the second thing with the Wi-Fi, and it is funny because Director Backlund, we have had lots of conversations around this. But I'm, I'm excited to let you know that we will be doing bus Wi-Fi moving forward next year, that we are implementing that. So that actually extends our students' days by quite a bit. Especially our rural students that we see do not have access many times, they will have that access on their school buses going home. So when they have a device, they'll have that. We are also exploring different opportunities with local businesses, different things like that. Those, that's still all in the works right now, but we are very aware that that's issue. The other thing that we talked a lot about is some training around how do you download the things before you go home? And that's really important because we feel like many of our teachers don't really know that yet and many of our students don't. And so that's going to be a big training piece for everyone, that you are able to download videos, download things on Google Drive and things, that then you can work on at home and bring back. So we're, we're looking at lots of different opportunities.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't have our kids play a lot of video games. And, and part of the reason for that is I, I played a video game with my son, Chayton, and there, there is a button I didn't know about when I was playing a racing game with him, that he can hit a button and it makes him go a lot faster. And so he takes off, laps me a few times. So what, what I'm concerned about with this is, is that we're providing some students that, that super fast button. And they're going to catapult them into the, into the future, preparing them for college even more so or careers and whatnot, and I think that's great. But those students that don't have access to that, don't have access to that button, which is truly being able to utilize these Chromebooks to, to the, to the best of their abilities. And so I'm still not hearing what, what Johnny's student, when they go home at night, if they don't have access to internet. You look at, you look at Brainerd, actually, a lot of the grants, from my understanding, they go to, to even, to, to internet such as, what is, what is, what is that, high, high-speed internet?
Fiber.
What's that?
Fiber, no.
Yes, fiber optic, actually go more to the rural areas and whatnot, not necessarily Brainerd. I have friends of mine that, that live in, in Brainerd that, that aren't able to access well or strong internet capabilities. So those individuals are concerning, are concerning for me. And, and I, and I guess I'm still not quite hearing how we're going to help Johnny's student or some of the students that I work with professionally, those students that, that this gap that they're already experiencing academically isn't just going to widen. Not that I need to tap the brakes on, on one-to-one, I think it's great and I support it. But I just want to make sure that we move forward considering those students that, that don't have those resources. And that's going to be a continual drumbeat that I'm going to be asking is, is how are we going to meet that need?
Yep, so I will continue to work on that together and with our community and continue to find resolution for that.
But I certainly do appreciate the hard work you've put into this and your whole team.
Sarah, a couple of questions. One is to follow up with what Charles was saying. Is there a, can we find out what students currently today don't have access to Wi-Fi at home? Can we do that before the end of the school year?
We have that data.
You got it already? So maybe if we could get that, so we could see, are we talking five percent, ten, fifty percent, so we'd get an idea and probably even location?
Yep, we actually have a map. It's about a year and a half old now, but we can still make some good, good decisions based on that, look at that. The other thing that we have to keep in mind is that the data is showing that ninety-eight percent of our, of the, actually the entire nation, regardless of economic level, have access on their phones now. But then what we talk a lot about is our Chromebooks are going to be the professional device for our students, so how do we make that bridge between that? So we will be, I can bring that data for you though, we can have further conversations.
Yeah, I think, you know, what we're, I think what, what'd be interesting as well is what students don't have access to, to Wi-Fi? And so we can see what we can do to address that. The other thing is, and I've brought this up as well, and I know you, you've worked with Tim Murtha a lot on this, but do we know yet what classes this fall where the books will be accessible on Chrome? The hard copy books, classroom books to, and my push is to eliminate, not eliminate, but reduce the number of books in the backpack? Are we any closer to that?
I was going to say, yep, Mr. Murtha, do you want to?
Short answer is we're moving closer to that. It's a little bit more complicated to just to have the online version of the book that we use versus the OER resource that is in our book and the teachers carry the resources themselves. Isn't that be a little bit longer of a conversation?
Is that something we could also get before the end of this, this classroom or this class period to know what, what books will be accessible online on these Chromebooks?
Yes.
For me, it's a big, it's a big push and it's just, it's, if we can just see all the classes and which ones are going to be available? A one-page, two-page, three-page document.
We can follow up with that.
Which ones are available on it, so we can reduce the number?
Sure, and you would like to see that before we finish up the project here?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm in full support. We are so far behind on, on doing this.
I just want to clarify.
No, I, I am in full, full support, but we're so far behind. So what I'm pushing for is, you know, if we're only going to have two out of a hundred books accessible on, on Chrome, well, what do we have to do this fall to get fifty out of a hundred? I don't know what the number is, but, you know, by the time we get the last one on, Chromebooks will be obsolete.
They'll be the next thing.
So we, you know, I'm pushing, so I'm very, 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 very thankful that we're at this point. But we're way overdue. What we implement right now, we're, we are still so many years behind the real world out there. So I, I just want to really push to see where we are with on the classrooms. And the last question I had is of Logan, why, why should we do this? What, how will this benefit you?
One, I'm in like history and all this, so I have to sometimes carry on big, heavy books. And this is very, very annoying, yes, and it doesn't do too good for the back. But also, there are kids who, you know, they're always on their phone, but they don't usually use a computer too often. And this could also help them, teach them how to use these computers, because some of them don't have access to this. And also, if, some, sometimes it's going to be way easier than having to like pull out twenty-seven papers. Instead, you could just click a few buttons and find all your documents. And this will be way easier for all the kids to be able to get their work done.
Music to my ears, and for the teachers for testing, maybe, and how, and checking out the test reports. I remember at basketball tournaments when you're supposed to be watching your son and you're grading papers. It's like, we've got to be able to automate this, so, thank you.
I, I like the idea of basically tethering, you're talking about with the mobile device to, to the Chromebook. And, and my wife's an instructor and we've done that. And my only concern with that, and then I'll stop, is, is that when you're tethering and you're using the data, the more you use it, unless you have unlimited data, then the cell phone companies will, either you'll tap out, so then we're, we're using up Johnny and Janie's personal data to, to do homework or to research. Or even if you have a certain amount of data, then once it gets to twenty or whatever, then it might slow down. And then that would hamstring students as well in terms of how, how fast. So they may have access to their phones, but they may not have super fast access.
So we have done a lot of research around this. I think what I'd like to do is follow up, possibly with an email, visit with Superintendent Larson further about the follow-up on that. But I would love to give you additional information on the data that we have and what we've, what we've come up with that. So we'll follow up with that before, or not too long after this meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, any other questions for us?
I, I think one of my concerns is just the monitoring and, and all the stuff that can go wrong with sites that shouldn't be seen and stuff like that. So again, I hope that's really covered and, and then they're going to have them all summer long too, the devices at home. And that could cause for more of that stuff to happen, I would think, more viruses and stuff.
That's a great question, and so as far as the, the filtering, of course, on, on campus and on our buses is completely filtered and SIPA compliant. The Chromebooks, they can only log into the Chromebook with their ISD one eighty-one account, which then we manage from here at home. That's all that they can log into. However, at this point, we are not doing the school filter at home, making that a po, a option. There's a lot of things, again, I can follow up and we can talk more about that with that. But we are making the recommendation that if that is a concern, that they reach out to their internet provider, because they're, it's very, I wouldn't say simple, but there's a lot of filtering options out there for parents if they choose to do that. But we can follow up and talk more about that as well.
If the parent looks into it, yeah.
Oh, and thank you, Nikki, we are, we're working on that digital citizenship piece, moving forward. At actually the fifth through twelfth grade level, we have some plans in the works. And I think that we'll be able to report on that more next year, where kids will get regular lessons moving forward on usage of devices and things like that.
So Sarah, what percentage of the student population does not have access to the internet?
You're putting me on the spot now, Director Nystrom. I know, I wish I had it on, I, I can visualize my map hanging up downstairs, but I don't have a direct percentage. I'd like to report that to you later.
Is it less than twenty-five percent?
I would have to report, again, I would make the, I would make the argument that less than twenty, less than ten percent don't have access with some kind of access, but did they have the high-speed access? That's where we, that's where the difference is going to come in, and that depends on where they live, economic levels, there's lots of different things, so. So yeah, I don't have an exact percentage for you right now, but I will report that out.
Wonderful though, thank you for doing that.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Everybody. New business, we have action items coming up here. Approval for the first budget revision for the twenty eighteen nineteen budget.
I saw move approval of the first budget revision.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Nystrom, any discussion? Like we just talked about a lot on the way through here.
One thing I would like to add is, Marcy and I have talked, and we're going to do another revision, probably the end of May, early June, something like that, to keep, keep the board updated before the end of the, of the year, probably in May, something like that, just to watch it real carefully, so.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the pay equity report as of December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, as presented.
So in your board packet has a little summary of what the pay equity report is. It was established with the nineteen eighty-four Local Government Pay Equity Act. So it's required to be done every three years, we were due December thirty-first, or it's as of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. What it does is it has four areas. The first area is just basically what is the job classification? And we have the classification categories done. A consultant did all that work for us, did a point skit, scale several years back. And then based on those job classifications, which ones are female, male dominant? And then it does three tests. So the first test is the underpayment ratio, looking at the jobs and what the predicted pay would be and what it actually is. The second test is the salary range test, so the average number of years to the max salary, male versus female. And then the last is the exceptional service pay test, so if they receive longevity or performance pay, looking at the male, female, female ratio there as well. All of these tests, if you get equal to or greater than eighty percent, you pass. We did pass that, so looking for the board to accept the pay equity report, so we can submit it.
Very good.
Thank you.
I'll move the approval of the pay equity report.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom and a second from Director Campbell, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, approval of the one-to-one Chromebook policy and usage handbook and timeline.
Go Tom, go.
So moved.
Okay, move a first.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Haglund, a second from Director Nelson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the schematic design for Forest View Middle School, drop-off, pickup, safe and secure entrance.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Campbell, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five to one. Next up, approval of the elementary standards for Blueprint one eighty-one.
I'll so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Campbell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval of the project prevailing wage requirements for the new elementary in Baxter, Forest View, Brainerd Learning Center and the Lincoln Education Center.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Campbell, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the releasing bond funds in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Approval of the releasing bond funds in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars and fifty-four cents payable to the city of Baxter to begin engineering services on the proposed Jasperwood and associated improvements needed for the new elementary in Baxter.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the second and final reading for MSBA policy updates. Heidi, were you gonna talk to us at all on that, or are we just, it was three oh three?
These are the ones I brought forward last time.
Right. Oh, okay.
I would move to approve, uh, the second and final reading of the following policies. Three oh three, four oh two, four oh four, four oh five, four oh six, four oh eight, and four oh nine, four thirteen, four eighteen, four twenty-three, and four.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now that we have some new ones here, the approval of the first reading for MSBA policy updates, five eleven, five thirteen, five fifteen, five twenty-five, and five thirty-three. And I, I know I talked to Heidi before, and I went, I had a question on five thirty-three, so I don't know if others wanted to talk first. That's fine.
Address that specific question. So, uh, under Article, um, nine, Standards and Nutrition Guidelines, Director Kern, question, item number three, uh, food service personnel will try to accommodate the religious ethic, ethnic and cultural diversity of the student body in meal planning. And she asked if that was tied to statutory guideline. Um, it's federal legislation, but it's a guideline. That's why MSBA is interpreted "will try", rather than saying if you see the rest of them are tied statutory to statute and they say will. So in this case, it says "will try". So that's why MSBA recommended the "will try" verbiage.
Okay. And the reason I had a question on that is I, I just felt like we were waxing ourself into a quarter, sort of. Um, we've, I think we've always accommodated, like the Catholics during Lent, to not serve meat on Friday and everything. And that's never been a problem. So I, I'm not sure why we're adding this to our policy. And I, I would prefer that it be, that part would be removed.
What section was that?
Okay, it's on page one forty-three in Board Book, or page four of that individual document.
It's under Standards and Nutrition Guidelines.
In what number?
Number three-three.
If you look at, so it refers to federal legislation.
So can you give an example of what that would be? I mean, we're really not saying that we're gonna do anything, right?
No. It's, we have lots of different accommodations that are requested, and I think the policy's trying to reflect that there, it's more of an equity lens being placed across policies.
For what?
Equity. So we look at being able to accommodate.
Okay.
So I think if we can, we would.
If we can. And that's again why MSBA has recommended "will try".
We would do it anyway.
So again, the example we gave is during Lent, a lot of times on Friday, there's fish. So that's just, it's been abroad and not to pick any secular entity.
And with our, with our Muslim community, I believe they don't eat pork. So then we would have to accommodate that as well.
Not have to.
Will try. And, and again, I think our food service with all the different food allergies and sensitivities and things that are coming into school, our food service has been very adaptable to trying to meet the unique needs of each learner that's coming into our building. And that's again why MSBA is trying to create a broader policy that ties to that federal, again, guideline, not a regulation.
And most of our schools have several options for students.
Elementary, it's a little bit more restrictive compared to our middle school and high school, where they have a la carte and salad bar and some options like that.
So we, so we wanna, my, well, me, me, would love to be able to provide a soft landing for anybody that comes to our community. So does this then provide us that?
That's exactly what I think MSBA is trying to guide us to do, to create more of that open opportunity. And again, it's a practice that our school district's been doing for years. I think food service, again, they're very adept. We try to meet the unique needs of every student coming in the building. This just puts it into that broad line of policy.
And this might prepare us for perhaps further down the road as, as more people start moving into our community.
Mm-hmm, correct. We're having some of that now. It just hasn't been reflected in the policy. But again, I think Sue's question was, it's statutory. It's in regulation. But again, the word, it's a guideline, so it's not a required. But again, "will try" verse, "will", if you look at all the other statements, it clearly says "will". So then we're tied to doing that.
I didn't notice that. Thank you for clarifying that, though. So I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Questions on any of the other policies, or?
I would like to separate five thirty-three from the rest.
Okay, I'll move the approval of policy five eleven, five thirteen, five fifteen, and five twenty-five.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second.
I think we did a second already.
Oh, okay.
Um, any further discussion? All those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And then for policy five thirty-three, is there a motion?
I still move approval of policy five thirty-three.
My second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one.
I'd like to remind the board that this is the first reading, and just as our practice, this, um, these four policies will be brought back at the next board meeting for approval. So, um, we'll separate them again on our agenda next time as well, and you can vote on them separately as well for final approval. Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Next up, approval for required MSBA annual review of policies five, four fourteen, four fifteen, and five fourteen.
Second.
We have a first from Director Haglund, a second from Director Nystrom. Any discussion?
Just a question. So these are just one-time readings only, is that?
Um, yes. Yep. And these are annual ones, but will?
Really, weren't any changes.
There aren't any changes, yeah.
Except for maybe, yeah, okay.
Okay, we have a first from Director Haglund, a second from Director Nystrom. Any fir- or, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Brainard Public School calendar.
Yes. I'd be happy to talk about that. If you remember at the last meeting, um, I talked about the fact that we had met and, um, looked at, at next year's calendar. And, um, since that time, we did find that we had one slight error in the calendar. How, but I do want the board to know that Ed Minnesota and, and I'll have looked at the calendar and felt really positively about it next year. What I'd like to do is just talk you through some of the key points. Basically, from the start of the school year through December, it's as a regular calendar that we're using this year. In January, however, we will come back for two days, um, on January second and third. We would have the end of the first semester on the seventeenth, which would give us an eighty-six day first semester with our students. On the twentieth, we would have, uh, staff in service as we did on December second. And, um, you'll notice in March that we do not have a spring break next year. But in exchange for that, in some respects, to, um, make a couple little breaks during the middle of the winter, we are going to be approving President's Day as a day off. And the Monday, uh, following the Easter break, um, that that would be a day off as well. This year, for instance, we go to school on President's Day. Um, next year, we would have it as a, as a day off of school. When we go into the month of May, that's probably where you'll see the biggest change. Um, we would have graduation and our last day of school for students on May twenty-second, rather than June third, to accommodate the building schedule, so that our students would be out of school about a week and a half early. What that would do then to the following week after Memorial Day is that our teachers would come back all day on the twenty-sixth and a half a day on the twenty-seventh, as that's in exchange for the opening in-service in August. Um, you'll also notice that the two sno- uh, snow makeup days are added onto the calendar here. And so if we had a snow day, then the twenty-seventh would be a full day and the twenty-eighth would be a half day. If we had two snow days, it would be full days, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, with a half day on the twenty-ninth. What we believe is really nice about adding the snow days at the end of the school year, both this year and next year, as with all of the packing that teachers are going to have to do, all of the, the moving and such that's going to be needed to accommodate our building schedule, that it will, um, it will accommodate for those days and give the teachers those times to do that. Um, this year, we'll decide, um, in March, what we're going to do with the snow days that we've had here. Um, but there may even be an opportunity in here where we could do some professional development, as well as some, um, some of the, the moving time and such. We'll just have to look at the two different years. But I would, um, I'm really pleased with the calendar. The change that I forgot to mention is that when we did the, um, adding of the days, we actually had a hundred and seventy-two student contact days instead of one hundred and seventy-three for this one school year only. And so, um, we had miscounted, uh, the professional development day on December second, um, last month when we, or at the last meeting when we brought it forward. So I would recommend the Board of Education approve this calendar as presented this evening.
Um, just a quick question. I'm not a hundred percent familiar with how, how our faculty, um, or staff for that matter, get, get paid in terms of their, their contracts. But, by, by losing one of those days, that doesn't in fact, doesn't impact the salary, does it?
Correct. Um, our, our certified staff have a one hundred and eighty-four day contract. And so what this does is it's one less student contact day, but that day then is a staff development day. So their contracts are still a hundred and eighty-four days, but we have one less student contact day and one more day that, that staff have to be here for professional development, moving, uh, whatever it is that we're going to need next year going into the building cycle.
So what I hear you say then is, there isn't gonna be any staff or faculty that are gonna see this impact their, their?
Checks. No, no. Correct. Yep, yep. Good question.
And I just have a question. So at the very end where we have the snow makeup days, if we were to have the students come back, which I'm hearing from you, we probably wouldn't have the students come back, they'd have the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh off and then come back on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth?
No, they wouldn't come back at all.
No, they would come back on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And the twenty-seventh.
Because it doesn't really, you might wanna say workshop slash snow makeup days, because right now it looks like the snow makeup days on this calendar are the last two days, and they really wouldn't be.
No.
You're right. Okay.
Does that make sense? Yeah.
I absolutely can do that. Okay, so workshops slash snow makeup days?
And make them the, yeah.
Okay. I will make that change tomorrow. Yeah, thank you.
I still move approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school calendar as presented with that correction.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Nystrom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right.
There's a pretty good cost reduction from ICS with that, right? If I remember right?
Huge, huge.
Just kidding.
No, I think, I think one of the really nice things, though, is that, you know, we, we know that it's going to take extra days of work for staff and, and, um, we intend to pay our staff for, for doing that work. And what this will do is that it'll free up some of those days in which they can do it on school time, so.
It's a good, good call.
I think everybody thought it was a win-win going into next year. Um, one thing I should add, um, that I know I talked about last time, though, is that, um, we will be signing the memorandum of agreement then that will take the calendars one year at a time, just during the short period of time, to take a look at what the calendars need to look like during the building cycle. And then we'll go back to, um, our negotiated agreement where we'll do cal- two calendars at a time.
And will you put in that memorandum to also that after the building projects are complete, we will make sure we get back to a hundred and seventy-three days of student contact time?
Yes.
Thank you. I feel student contact time is really important, so I don't want to lose that over these four years.
And right now, that's contractual. That way, it's just that the board can make a change if you choose.
Okay, it is in the contract. Okay. Thank you.
So yeah, you're welcome.
Were you gonna cover our other three days off in your report later, or?
Well, we're gonna do that at the March meeting. I think it's, I forget if it's the eleventh or?
Eighteenth, isn't it?
Is it the eighteenth, eighteenth of March? Because right now, um, even this week is looking a little bit, I'll, I'll trade that job with anybody if you want to.
You know, I, I think I remember last year someone saying, well, we haven't needed a snow day forever.
And we probably have had the least amount of snow days of, of any school in the state with, with the way this weather has been this year. And so, yeah.
If we had Chromebooks across the platform.
Well, you know what, though? If, if we had Chromebooks K-12, um, there are many schools that are being able to adjust this to have online school. But we don't have all of our students with the Chromebooks, so. Maybe someday, huh, Sarah? Yeah.
Tom, Tom's poll numbers just slid down on students, right?
So, yeah.
Great. We have our informational section now. Brainard Public Schools Foundation Report. Director Campbell, do you have something?
Yeah, not much more to report than what we already did. Again, uh, thanks to the, uh, the School Foundation Committee and their great job on putting together another super big event. Thanks Jessica and Jenny. Jenny was chair of that, of that big event there, deal, and she did a wonderful job. Um, and again, raising over sixty thousand. I don't think all the, all the expenses are in yet, so it's probably gonna be between sixty, sixty-five or somewhere in there. So, but again, great, uh, great donations given, uh, to help out with their four A grants, so we'll be looking forward to see what they do with that. Um, but thanks for everyone for getting there too. I think the whole, whole membership was there. And, and Lane got up and did a good job with speaking about the, the big events, so.
It's a great night.
And then they're just continuing to work on everything else that they do. So again, big shout out to them. Thank you for what they do.
Yeah, thank you. Business Service Report. Marcy, you, you're gonna share something with this?
You're not sick of me yet, huh?
Um, so in the board book is the enrollment report, and I did add a couple columns. So the first column is a new add, the seventeen-eighteen student count as of May twenty-ninth of last year. Just so you could see how our head count was versus how we ended the year. The next column is the, how we ended the year, the adjusted ADMs. And then also, um, the revised budget ADM is added based on this budget revision. Um, and then early childhood to twelfth grade, uh, in total for a month of, as of February first, is down one. But kindergarten through twelve is down eleven. So that early childhood, um, you know, progressively throughout the year, you'll see that number just keep growing because they keep screening kids. Um, so that it is a little bit deceiving when you see that we're down one, because the increase is because of that early childhood number. But kindergarten through twelve, we're actually down eleven. Um, and then the, the one other thing I was gonna note was in that check register, um, the wire transfers were new for this month. If you saw those large numbers, that, those are all the wire transfers. And then also, um, payroll checks are now on the payroll related expense checks, not actually payroll checks, um, IRS payments. Those are now on the check register as well. IRS payments, those are now on the check register as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, you're on.
All right. Most everything that I've highlighted that I wanted to talk about, we've talked about. So it's been a great meeting that way. Just looking ahead, February is always really a fun month in a school. It's I Love to Read Month. And this, starting this week, it's going to be fun. I get to go into lots of classrooms and read. Tomorrow, I wanted to let the board know that we are going to be looking at the Performing Arts Center entrance and the entrance to the high school. And hoping to be able to come up with what the needs are. I know that we had a meeting last week with some concerns that many of you have talked to me about since. And we're going to be addressing that tomorrow. So at 1:00, we're going to be meeting here at the Washington Educational Services Building. Also, we've got lots of speaking to do the next couple of weeks. A little while ago, you had talked about, has anybody had any input as far as like some of the plans and such with Forest View? And we talked that we do it mostly through Blueprint 181. And yet I was thinking about it later, that I know I have two speeches on Wednesday to talk to different groups, to update on where we are in the project, and to have them get input. And we've been doing that all along. I know Bob and I had one with the Rotary. Ruth and I were scheduled at the Kiwanis, and it got snowed out, or iced out, or something. But we'll reschedule it, and we've rescheduled Saratoga. And so we really do look for a lot of those opportunities to give our community that kind of input as well on our projects as we go through. So I hadn't jumped in and said that, and so I wanted to make sure I clarified that.
Thank you.
Also, again, Minnesota School Board Recognition Week, February 18th through the 22nd. Thank you all for all you do, and it's going to be fun. We're going to put our picture in the paper and a nice little article. And then we've got Principal Academy and Day at the Capitol, and that's kind of it for February. So we have one more board meeting on the 25th, and it's going to go fast. That's all I have tonight.
She covered most of these. Looks like you get a lot of lunch.
I'm going to have a lot of lunch, too. Yes, a lot of lunch this week, this month.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. So moved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion adjourned.
I will sign.